Good evening. Thank you all for joining us for the special meeting of the Board of Trustees of Socorro ISD. This meeting is being held June 11th, 2020, and the time is 5:30. This meeting will be held by teleconference. The teleconference audio can be accessed following the toll-free number 1-877-568-4106, using the access code 4642847717, and through an audio agenda, I'm sorry, through an audio feed located on our YouTube channel. Any member of the public wishing to comment on an agenda item can send the comments to the following email address: All backups and materials for the meeting can be accessed at the following link, which is our sisd.net website. On March 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meetings laws to the extent necessary to allow telephonic or video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following: Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Number one, although members of the Board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by telephone call and internet access. Number two, we are meeting by use of both telephone conference call, online access, and through use of an email link for questions. Number three, if a member of the public submitted written comments in advance, the Board President or a member of the administration will read the comments and track them before or during the Board's consideration of that item. If you would like to provide comment at a future meeting conducted by video conference or telephone call, please follow instructions on the meeting notice. Number four, all other meeting procedures will adhere to Board adopted procedures to the extent practical. Number five, an audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. Number six, we apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties and ask for your patience as we navigate unprecedented conditions. And number seven, if you have any questions about these suspended laws, please call the Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787. And now I'll do a roll call to establish a quorum. Mr. Morales?
Present.
Mr. Gata?
Here.
Mr. Gata?
There.
Mr. Garcia?
Present.
Mr. Mina?
Present.
And Ms. Rodriguez? I believe Ms. Rodriguez stated that she would be a little late. And now, if you will all please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, which is being led tonight by Ms. Carmen Cruzay.
Good evening, Dr. Espinoza, President Nahara, members of the Board. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Cruzay. At this time, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for our country and everyone dealing with the effects of the tragic death of George Floyd. We will now continue with our agenda. Item three, district report. I believe we have a letter on this item. Ms. Puerto Rico?
President Nahara, members of the Board, Dr. Espinoza, I will now, good evening. I will read the letter, and this is what it says. "Good morning. As a concerned parent of two children who attend SISD schools, I would like to submit the below comments, questions for the meeting today. If students displaying COVID-19 symptoms are identified and isolated, what will the protocol be? What if the parent is unable to pick up the child immediately? Will a doctor's note be required for the student to re-enter the campus in order to avoid possible transmission to others? For the safety of all those on each campus, wellness checks are a critical component, and there needs to be a much instruction, communication, education for parents to keep students at home if they display any symptoms. I have seen too many students sent to school when they are sick. Will you have additional nursing staff or others to assist in caring for the students, administering medications, calling parents, taking temperatures, et cetera, given that not only will COVID-19 symptoms be monitored, but also the normal, everyday health concerns? Both of my children have been susceptible to the common ailments such as stomach virus, migraine headaches, and other needs that require visits to the nurse's office. My concern is that they receive proper attention, if and when this would happen, without being exposed to those who display symptoms of COVID-19. What is the plan for handling all of the health concerns that normally occur, along with the added concerns brought about by the pandemic, and be able to monitor and contact parents and ensure that all those with health ailments are properly attended to? This is key for me in sending my children back to school. I appreciate all that SISD is doing for our students and community. I see that a fund was established for helping our community for the benefit of the El Pasoans Fighting Hunger Food Bank. It is important that we don't forget that there are many people around us who are struggling in the middle of the pandemic, and we also need to focus on what we can do to help. Thank you for all that you're doing and for your time, as I realize that we're all required to maintain some amount of patience and flexibility."
Thank you, Ms. Puerto Rico. If during the course of our presentation tonight, Dr. Espinoza, if these questions are not answered for this parent, can we please make sure someone reaches out to her?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And we'll continue with item 3A, Socorro ISD 2020-2021 Recovery Plan: New Normal. Ms. Macias?
President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the Board. Today, we're going to share with you our 2020-21 Proposed Recovery Plan. What we've done is we've actually shared this with 14 focus groups. We've had over 6,500 participants and over 1,500 responses that we received. With that, if you all could go to page five of your Board packet, our emergency operation plan is always in place. And back in late February, early March, we started receiving information that COVID-19 was possibly within our community and headed this way. With that, we started having meetings with our local officials, health authority, and with our Office of Emergency Management. We quickly went from a watch level one to a warning level three. At that time, city and state ordinances mandated school closures. What we're doing now is we're recovering, or we're creating our recovery plan for school reopening, and we're looking at transitioning to an alert level two. If you go to page six of your book, this is a timeline that we followed and how we received input from various stakeholders. Back on May 18th through the 29th, we actually had a parent survey. Over 10,000 parents responded to that survey. We also opened up an employee survey, which was 2,300-plus employees responded. And today, we are going to share with you the exact same information that we shared with them, and we would like your guidance as we transition forward. If you look on page seven, the CDC is one of the resources that we have consistently used from the beginning. This is one of the checkoff lists that they have for us to ensure that we are ready to reopen. So we have teams that are working on creating our safety and wellness protocols, the training for them, establishing and ordering our personal protective equipment for our students, faculty, and staff, ensuring that every single campus has the same equipment to ensure that every single campus will receive the same training. And if you notice here on this slide, it actually states that a very strong partnership with our local health department and with our officials is a priority, and that's something that I feel very comfortable with. We have been meeting with them for now three to four months on a weekly basis. We meet with them on Friday. We provide them our plans. They give us their eyes, their support, and their approval as we move forward. If you look on page eight, these are some of the wellness protocols that we asked for feedback from our stakeholders. We're looking at possibly having students enter for a pre-assigned entrance. That'll minimize the groups that our students are interacting with. This will help with contact tracing if we ever do have a COVID-positive student or faculty-staff member within our campuses. We are also looking at asking our students, faculty, and staff to wear a personal face mask. We will be providing that to them. We will have disposable face masks available. If anybody forgets it, or as kids, sometimes they tear them, we will have those masks for them. We're also asking that our students, as they enter the building, they go to a pre-assigned area. At that area, there will be daily wellness checks, a temperature check that will be taken. We're also looking at developing an electronic daily wellness check, where parents will let us know before the child leaves home, yes, my child is safe to go to school, is healthy, or no, my child will be staying home. That electronic message will go directly to the teacher, will go to the administrator, to the nurse, and if our student is actually riding our bus, it'll go to our bus driver. It's going to be a collaborative effort between community, parents, faculty, staff, students to ensure that we keep each other healthy. If anybody does experience any of the COVID-19 symptoms while in our campus, our nurses will have their regular nurses station, but they're also going to have an isolation room. And that isolation room is going to be key. That way, if anybody is having any of the symptoms, they're able to go directly there. Our nurses will have all the personal protective equipment to take care of them, and then we'll be able to transition them home or to a health facility safely. We're going to be teaching everybody those COVID-19 symptoms to be aware of their health and wellness. If they're feverish, cough, shortness of breath, sore throat, chills, repeated shaking, loss of taste or smell, muscle pain, headache, close contact with a person confirmed to have COVID-19, those are the daily wellness checks that we're going to be working in collaboration to ensure that everybody that comes into our campus knows that they are healthy and safe to be on our campus. The next page, on page 10, you actually see a resource from Germany. We do know that there are other countries, other areas within our nation that have had COVID-19 longer than we have. So we are going and learning from them. This is a resource, and this is something that has been successful. And this is one of the templates that we're using. Great specific entrances, great specific building zones. If you notice, it's truly to minimize the type of interaction that our students have, and that way, we know exactly the context that they have.
It works all the way in the bathroom stall.
Ms. Lucero, I could hear you.
Mark.
I know that she's going to the bathroom. You guys know that I'm silly, right? So item number three, one thing that we're looking at are having restrictions for our parents and vendors and our volunteers. What we're trying to do is we're trying to ensure that anybody that's coming onto our campus knows our wellness protocols and that we know that everybody stepping into our campus is healthy. And we will have those systems in place, and we will make sure that we communicate with our community. And that's one of the key things that we know is that as we develop these systems, it's going to be about communicating. One-way traffic corridors. If the corridor or the hallway is narrower, if that is a word, than six feet, we'll have the one-way traffic hallways, or we will have stop signs where one group will go and go to an area that's safe, and then the other group will pass and use that same corridor. We're going to minimize those frequently touched areas. No lockers, no supply sharing. We are going to continue to work with our community. That way, if there's students that need additional supplies, I know that we always get great support from our community members. That way, we could make sure that our students have their individual supplies. Bottled water, we're going to ask for our students to have their individual waters, possibly closing down our water fountains. That way, it minimizes those frequently touched areas. Hand washing in class in a consistent basis. And this is something that Germany has. I don't know if we will get there, but they actually have express bathrooms for COVID-negative faculty, staff, and students. We do have an RFP that actually closed today, and maybe that telemedicine provider might have a rapid response test in the future that our faculty, staff, students could take advantage of, and maybe this is something that we could actually incorporate into our system. If you go to page 11, this is social distancing. What we've learned is to stay healthy, we wash our hands consistently, wear a face covering so that we do not share germs with each other. However, with the face coverings, we do know that it's important that we take face mask breaks. It is not feasible for us to wear a face mask all day. So face mask breaks are encouraged. And what it is, is whenever you're six feet apart and away from everybody, if you're not having loud conversations, you're able to have a face mask break. After you're ready, you sanitize your hands, place your face mask back on, and you sanitize your area. And that's something that we're going to be teaching our students, our parents. We are going to have professional development online through June and July so that we could work together so that we all know the safety protocols that will help keep us safe. If you look on page 11, this is a picture of what an elementary classroom is going to look like. This is Loma Verde. And if you notice, our desk are six feet apart, and we are actually going to social distance the entire campus. So as you walk in, you'll see visual areas where you could stand six feet apart. Also, for the cafeterias, we're going to have hand washing reminders, and we're also going to have additional sanitizing stations and consistently ensure that we are sharing all of our wellness procedures. If you look on page 12, one thing that we're looking at is that our campuses are not made for social distancing. So what we're doing is we're thinking outside of the box. Right now, the CDC, what they have is six feet apart. So every single administrator is actually going back and identifying the capacity for their classrooms. And with that, we're finding that about nine to 11 to 12 students fit in a classroom, six feet social distance, that way they're safe. So what we're doing is we're looking at reassigning building spaces. So we're looking at labs, gymnasiums, cafeterias. Possibly, whenever the weather permits, we will have classes outdoors. We're looking at maybe creating partnerships. We know that El Paso Community College might start remotely. And so that might be a collaboration that we could do that if they have any real estate that we could have any classrooms, maybe we could have some of our high school students go do some of their classes at EPCC. And those are things that we are thinking outside of the box and working with our community to ensure that we build a flexible model for 2020-21. Social distancing will also be in place for our buses. We want to make sure that we transport our students safely to and from school. When you board a bus, you will visually be able to see where you should sit. That way, you're safe. Face mask will be there for our bus drivers. We will have face shields, and we will have a thermometer there. That way, they could actually, and it's a touch-free thermometer. That way, they ensure that as students come onboard, because our bus drivers, they're amazing. They're sometimes the first and last member of our team that our students see. That way, they could also help us in ensuring that everybody's healthy as they transition to and from school. Just as a summary, our classroom wellness protocols. Daily morning temperature checks. I know that Finanz has been working feverishly to make sure we have all our PPEs when we open. They've actually ordered 1,100 infrared thermometers, personal protective equipment for our teachers and students, face mask, gloves, face shields, goggles. Those are all items that are ordered. And I know that Mr. Ortega has actually created all the PPEs and documented what we need for our students, for our classrooms, that are our unit classrooms. So for our teachers that serve our special ed students, it'll be amazing because every single classroom will have all their personal protective equipment that they need. I know that Nurse Madrid has also done the same thing for our nurses. Their personal protective equipment is a little unique, but every single nurses station will have what they need. Social distancing requirements, minimizing transitions, of course, hand sanitizing, washing our hands, all of those protocols will be shared and taught. And I know that our maintenance and operations, they are working to ensure that they have all of our areas, especially frequently touched areas, cleaned on a regular basis. I know that they have ordered 200 electrostatic sprayers for our buses, 55 for our facilities, and that'll be for our instructional and non-instructional facilities. And if you go to page 15, flexibility is going to be our key word for 2021. One thing that we've learned is that we're going to be partially opening indefinitely until we find a, or until they find a vaccine. If you notice, at some point here in El Paso, we will reach our peak. We're not there yet. But when we do, the city of El Paso will then loosen some of their social distancing requirements, and we will be able to start transitioning back to our new normal. However, what we've learned is that there is going to be a possibility of a late fall resurgence. So at that time, we're going to have to transition and pivot on a dime and be able to have our instructional models in place. That way, we continue to meet the needs of all of our students as COVID-19 does what it does. We do know from other countries that there are ongoing waves. Again, COVID-19 does not play by any rules. So at this time, I want to pass it over to Ms. Zapata. She will be sharing with you our proposed SISD calendar. As I mentioned, we have to be prepared for COVID-19. So she's going to share with you the flexibility that we're incorporating into that calendar. Ms. Zapata?
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the Board. Elise Zapata, Assistant Superintendent of Schools for Elementary Education. And I'm here to share with you proposed changes to our 2020-2021 calendar. And as Ms. Macias has stated, throughout this time, we have looked and we are continuously looking at all of our systems and procedures that we have in place, and we're restructuring them because of this pandemic. We found that our calendar is definitely one of those systems that we needed to restructure to include flexibility. So as we restructured this calendar, we kept two things in mind. First, the safety and security of our students, our teachers, and communities. And we've also thought about how can we maximize our resources to ensure we are building a strong educational foundation and closing any type of instructional gaps for our students that may have occurred during this time. So with this calendar, it's been restructured to include additional flexibility to absorb any type of extended COVID-19 closures while still meeting the TEA requirements for the operation of schools. So if you turn to page 17, you'll see the proposed calendar, and it does have 180 days of instruction for students while maintaining 187 teacher workdays. If you look at the upper left-hand corner of the page of the calendar, you will see that teachers will report to staff development or will be having staff development the days of July 20th through the 23rd, and then we'll have a workday on the 24th. Students will begin the first nine weeks of instruction on July 27th. They will be involved with instruction the month of August. And then, of course, we will maintain our Labor Day holiday on September 7th. And then, our first nine weeks will end for students on September 25th. Now, students will enter into what we're going to call a Fall Floating Intercession on September 28th through October 9th. And in a few moments, I will talk with everyone about what floating intercession means. Students will begin the second nine weeks on October 12th. Again, in November, we will maintain our Veterans Day holiday, November 11th. We will also keep our Thanksgiving break, November 23rd through the 27th. And then, students will end their second nine weeks of instruction the first semester of the year on December 16th, which will be a full instructional day. Our winter break will begin December 17th and will last until January 1st. January 4th will be a staff development day, and students will enter in the third nine weeks of instruction on January 5th. Again, we'll maintain our Martin Luther King holiday on January 18th. And then, if you go up to the right-hand corner of the right-hand side of the calendar, you'll see students will be involved in instruction the month of February, and they will end the third nine weeks on March 5th. March 8th through March 19th will be the Spring Floating Intercession. There will be a staff development day on March 22nd, and the fourth nine weeks will begin March 23rd. We will have our Good Friday holiday on April 2nd. Again, in May, we will keep our Memorial Day holiday. The school year will end for students on June 3rd, which will be an early release. And then, teachers will have a half-day workday on June 4th, and high school graduations are planned for June 4th and June 5th of 2021. Now, if you turn to page 18, I'm going to talk about what we mean by floating intercession. So this calendar was built on flexibility. And again, we also looked at data. So a lot of things that we're looking at here, as Ms. Macias has stated, and what we're hearing is that there could be a fall resurgence or a resurgence of COVID-19 in the fall. And we also looked at our data from past attendance. And what we noticed is around flu season, we have some of the lowest student attendance rates between December and January, I'm sorry, December and February at all levels. Now, while COVID-19 doesn't necessarily play by any rules, such as what we expect from the flu, we want to keep that timeframe in mind in case there's a resurgence. So right now, I'm going to talk to you about what floating intercession means and how we have included some flexibility into this calendar. So if you'll see on page 18, what you're going to see is you're going to see two yellow bars moved up by the week of September 7th. So this is just an example of what a floating intercession would be. For example, if we have students in a school and if there might be an outbreak of COVID-19, and we have to close the school, or maybe multiple schools, we have the ability with a floating intercession to move it up from September 28th through October 9th. We have the ability to move that intercession up, to close that school down, or schools, again, maintaining the safety and security of our students, our teachers, our community, and then allowing us to disinfect and do what we need in those schools. And then, of course, when they would regularly have that intercession, they would be in the instructional mode. Again, we're looking at how we can keep everyone safe while maximizing that instructional time. Another example might be where we have flexibilities. We have some additional minutes built into this calendar because we are starting our students in instruction one week earlier. So for example, if there is a fall resurgence of the COVID-19 and we have to close down a school or schools or even the district because of some positive cases, we do have additional minutes where we could use those to close it down, and we can apply to the state for waivers. Then again, in January, right after January 4th, another example of what the Spring Floating Intercession, again, it's just an example, is if you see those two yellow bars down in January, if we have to close a school or multiple schools or even the district, we have the ability to float that intercession from March all the way up to February so that, number one, again, we can keep our communities, our students, our teachers safe. We have time to go in and disinfect. And then, of course, we're maximizing our instructional time because, of course, now the students would be involved in instruction in March. So these are just some examples that we have built in to show the flexibility as well as how this calendar has the flexibility to accommodate the different types of learning models that we're about to present to you. And right now, I am going to turn it over to Ms. Jessica Macias so that she can present to you, to everyone, what our instructional models will look like for the 2020-2021 school year.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the Board. This is Jessica Macias, the School Improvement Officer for the Socorro Independent School District. And again, I will be presenting the proposed teaching models that will help us transition in the upcoming school year and transition our instruction again, depending on what COVID-19 is doing within our community. This presentation does start on page 90. This presentation does start on page nineteen of your board book. In planning for the upcoming school year, again, you will see the guiding principles that we kept at the forefront of all our planning is to ensure that all of the safety of our students, teachers and staff members. We've created craft, we've crafted schedules that will account for virtual fatigue, the practice of social distancing and, of course, sanitation procedures. These schedules, again, have increased instructional time that will be aligned to grade level standards because, again, TEA is moving forward with the reopening of schools, and we have yet to receive any waivers for the upcoming school year. We must adhere to the, again, instructional minutes required, as Ms. Zapata mentioned in her previous presentation. So again, looking at the models that we're creating, you will see some consistency within the model. And again, these will be differentiated, however, with the start and stop times remaining the same. These particular models will be, again, in response to what COVID-19 is doing within our communities. So we will trans, transition between the models, again, depending how the COVID-19 is doing at a particular campus, as Ms. Zapata mentioned, using the calendar in our favor as well, using the floating intercessions. And then, of course, this differentiated learning models to help us get through the upcoming school year. In these schedules, you will see an increased amount of instructional time. So different from what we were doing this fourth nine weeks, we will transition to a full day of learning. And again, the instruction being delivered will be virtual and live to our students. So again, as we provide them with the grade level standards that they need to be prepared within that grade level. Again, with all this new learning, we will have a huge amount of professional development that we will offer to our teachers and, of course, to our parents. We'll have a number of pre-recorded webinars that our parents and teachers can access to help them get through our new normals and, of course, virtual teaching. And then, of course, when we transition to hybrid teaching as well. And then again, at the academic, academic services department is here to provide customer service. So we will, again, as this is a fluid situation, we will update those webinars as soon as possible to, again, deliver great information to our family. On page twenty-one, you will see the proposed models that we will, again, have and transition to, again, depending upon how COVID-19 is doing within our community. Number one is, again, the traditional learning model where every student returns back to our campuses and, again, adhering to CDC guidelines with social distancing. We know that this particular model, again, is, will not be, again, something that we start the year with. And again, until we get either a vaccination or the virus simply goes away, we have to respond. So looking at the other two models, looking at Model Two is the Remote Learning Academy model that we would transition to in the event of a full district closure or a campus closure closes due to COVID-19 outbreaks within their community. So again, using the calendar in our favor and then transitioning from models, we could transition to the Remote Learning Academy or Model Three, which is a hybrid learning model. The hybrid learning model is, again, would be our attempt to slowly start bringing our students back to the campuses. And the percentage is solely dependent, again, upon CDC guidelines for reopening. So as we see within our communities, they recommend a twenty-five percent opening and then look and see how the virus is doing, and then they slowly start to recommend a higher percentage. So we would, again, start our percentage at, of course, what the recommendations of CDC. And this, again, is where we start to bring our students back. We'd like to group our students in a particular group so that when we do have our students, we know who is on our campus on a particular day. And this, again, would help us with contact tracing in the event of an outbreak. And Model Four is the SISD At-Home Learning Academy. And this option, again, would be available to all our SISD families who want to keep their children at home for fear, of course, exposure to the virus, and they want them still participating in the great instruction that SISD is known for. So again, this particular option will be available for our parents. Within these models, again, you will see that consistency in the start and stop times. So on page twenty-one, we're going to start with the Remote Learning Academy. And this, again, is the event, is, would be used in the event of a full district closure or a campus closure, depending where we're at with the virus in, within our community. Our teachers, again, would be expected to prepare and deliver grade-level instruction to our students. On page twenty-five, you will see sample schedules. And again, we have staggered the start times for each level. So our elementary campuses would start at seven-thirty. In the Remote Learning Academy, this will be a virtual teaching. So our students would be expected to log on, and our teachers also would be expected to start the day at seven-thirty, providing great instruction. You can see the sample schedule in front of you that has embedded times for brain breaks. So again, students can walk away from the computer, go to the restroom, get a drink of water, and then come back for instruction as well. And then you do see that we do have a conference time embedded within the teachers to give them that time to plan. The expectation for virtual teaching will be Monday through Thursday. So again, our teachers will be providing live instruction to their students who are participating from home. And then again, on Fridays, the teachers are, would not be expected to provide live instruction. They would be expected to participate in faculty meetings, grade-level planning, grade-level PLCs. And then again, depending upon the length or the duration of the Remote Learning Academy, they start inviting students on Fridays to participate in small group instruction. Our students who are in our three-year-old program and our pre-K and kinder students, they would have an earlier end time, and they would end at two o'clock. Looking at our K-8 elementaries, again, schedule is still the same. But looking at our K-8 middle schools and our middle schools on page twenty-seven and twenty-eight of your board book, you will see that we have, we're going to go with the block scheduling for the upcoming school year. This, again, will provide longer class periods for each one of the courses being offered on a particular day. And then again, when we do revert to a hybrid or a traditional model, it will allow for fewer transitions of students, again, within the instructional day. So again, that's where we have crafted the consistency in these models. Depending what model we're in, the start and stop times will always be the same, and the block scheduling will always be the same. So looking at our K-8 middle schools and our traditional middle school campuses, our teachers would be expected and students would be expected to start at eight fifteen in the morning, and their instruction would go straight through all the way till three thirty. Within this schedule, you will see five-minute transitions, which translate to breaks for students to break away and then, again, go back into their next course. Again, the expectation for virtual teaching will be Monday through Friday, Monday through Thursday, and then Friday, again, giving teachers that time to pull in small groups, attend faculty meetings, attend PLC plan, and then, of course, provide that intervention for our students. Any pre-K or kinder students that are in the K-8 elementary, elementary, again, will have that earlier end time, and they will start at eight fifteen but go all the way till two forty-five. Our high school schedule, again, in the Remote Learning Academy starts on page twenty-nine, and our high school students would start at nine AM. They would go through a full day of instruction till four fifteen. And then, again, we have also reverted to the block schedule for our high schools as well. On Friday, we have our, our students would participate, our teachers would have, excuse me, office hours all day on Friday. Again, and this is, this would allow the students in high school to, again, go into a, participate with a teacher to, again, clarify any of the instruction that they received throughout the week. On page thirty, we do start with our hybrid learning model. And again, this particular model would be in the event, is our attempt to start bringing kids back to the campuses, again, with the percentage being solely dependent on what the recommendations from the CDC are. And again, teachers will be providing in-person and virtual instruction at the same time. So again, the teacher will be providing instruction every day. However, the group and students that are coming to the campus would differ every day. And we would do our best to, again, keep those students together so the event, in the event of a positive case, we can contact the families within that group. So on page thirty-two, this, again, was just to give you a visual. We would group the students in two particular groups, having students in group, the blue group, which would be Group One, and the red stick figure would represent Group Two. And then, again, the percentage is solely depend, dependent on the recommendations of CDC. On page thirty-three, you will see what a typical hybrid schedule will look like, where the teacher reports to campus every single day, Monday through Friday. However, the students that are participating live will differ every day. So you'll see that on Week A, Group One will show up three times a week, and Group Two is home, again, still participating in the instruction, however, from the comfort of their homes. And then Group Two will show up on Tuesdays and Thursdays while Group One is at home, again, still participating in the instruction. And then on Week B, the opposite is true, where Group Two will show up three times a week and Group One will show up just twice a week. But again, the instruction is happening simultaneously.
Yes, sir, Mr. Gagnon.
We got a real quick question on that. You have the A and B, and I just want to have a real quick question on it because I know, are we going to try to keep family members together?
Yes, sir.
You know, what, so we are, we're going to try to keep the families together so they're off on the same days and help our families?
Yes, sir. So once again, we, again, get your approval. We will be sending out, again, different procedures for families. And then, of course, like almost a reregistration for us to put families together.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure because I know that's going to be, and I apologize. Again, I know it's going to be one of the, that's one of the questions that we're going to get because, you know, there's families with multiple students in, you know, in pre-K, I mean, in our middle schools and our high schools. I just wanted to make sure that we're going to have the family members together so when they are off, they can be off together to, you know, the older ones can babysit the younger ones or, you know, whatever we can do to help them stay together at the same time. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. So looking at our staggered start times, no matter what model we're in, whether even we come back traditionally, all our elementaries will start at seven-thirty. All our K-8s and middle schools will start at eight fifteen, and our high school students will start at nine o'clock. So again, that is the one thing that we can keep consistent in the upcoming school year is the start times. This will also help when we start to incorporate transportation, giving them that forty-five-minute transition time to, in transporting of students, as Ms. Macias mentioned earlier, and showing the example of, again, the social distancing within our bus. We will have increased bus routes. So you will see the staggered start times in the morning and in the afternoon on page thirty-five. And then again, looking at what our parents and our faculty, faculty members have, let us know with it, with their surveys, again, our parents having over ten thousand responses do prefer the online model. Forty-eight percent of our families of the responses, again, did prefer that particular model. And our staff, again, forty-five percent recommended that model as well. As far as traditional, about twenty-five percent of our faculty members want to come back to our traditional model. And then, of course, twenty-eight percent of our parents want to come back to that particular model. And the hybrid model, again, we have about twenty-eight percent of our faculty members that want to come back to that particular model. And then, of course, twenty-two percent of our families want to come back to that particular model. So looking a little closer at what those schedules would look like, if you look at page thirty-seven, you will see that within the instructional time, we have embedded times for social distancing and hygiene sanitation guidelines. Again, as our students do start to come back, we will be providing them breakfast and lunch. You still see the brain breaks because we will have students participating from home. So we will still give everybody a brain break and then, of course, incorporate those mask breaks as well. And then looking at the afternoon dismissal, we will incorporate, again, social distancing and hygiene sanitation procedures as well. You will see the expectation for teaching will be Monday through Friday. However, it's the groups of students that will differ every day in front of the students. So again, looking at the remainder of the schedules for elementary and middle school, that the one thing we kept consistent was the start and stop times. And then, of course, the block schedule for secondary. So again, that minimizes the number of transitions students will actually have to do. And then we do, of course, have the social distancing and sanitation times embedded within the instructional day. And then, again, having our high schools and start at nine o'clock. So all the start time and end times remain the same. We understand that this is new learning for all of us, and this particular virus is having us, again, rethink every one of our systems as what we've known about education. So we will provide lots of professional development. There will be sessions that will be virtual live, and there will be some that are pre-recorded and, again, available for teachers to view at any time to help them get through the upcoming school year. So again, on page forty-two, you will just see a sample list. And again, this is just a sample where the list keeps growing every time we think of something new. But again, that will be our charge next year is to provide them with the professional development that they need to provide great instruction, whether in the remote learning model or whether in the hybrid learning model as well. And then, again, knowing what our expectations from the state are as far as state testing, we will be training our teachers on how to assess during this model and then, again, provide that effective communication. In our professional development, we will also include webinars for parents to view so that they understand the platforms that we are using and they can help their children navigate through them should they feel the need to do so. So they will have those webinars as well. Again, thank you this evening for your time, and now I toss it back to Dr. Espinoza.
Yes, President Nahara, members of the board, let me say this. I cannot say enough about tireless efforts of our leadership team to ensure that we provide our students, teachers and our entire Socorro SISD community with the, with the best and safest environment to thrive in the upcoming school year. Believe me when I say there is nobody that outworks Team SISD. It's that never quit, never slow down, that never get complacent attitude that makes SISD the largest district in Texas to earn an A grade and the post-secondary readiness distinction. So I am incredibly thankful for the awesome people in our school district, our teachers, parents, our campus and district leaders, support staff, trustees, our employee associations, who have been going above and beyond to ensure that we're meeting the needs of our students and also our employees during this pandemic. You know, as we've been moving ahead and planning for the upcoming school year, you know, I'd like to thank the thousands of parents and employees who've provided their valuable feedback via district surveys. And I believe we had twelve presentations, focus group sessions that our, our school district hosted. Maybe we had a couple more, but I know twelve for sure because we've been, you know, working real hard to make sure that we hear our stakeholders' voices. We've answered many questions, but let me say this. We're still working to answer many, many more questions. And I, I completely understand that everybody wants an answer immediately when they ask the questions. But unfortunately, there are so many, so many different variables that, that, that it's difficult to answer all questions on the spot. You know, we're, we're working as fast and diligently as, as we can. And as you've heard tonight, you know, we've been conducting research, analyzing the vital insights from the surveys, ordering, you know, the much-needed and valuable personal protection equipments and supplies and continuing to closely follow. And this is very important and adhere to the guidelines from the CDC, from TEA, the Texas Education Agency, and our local government and health officials. And this evening, we're asking our Board of Trustees to approve here in a little bit, our proposal to revise the school calendar to begin instruction on July twenty-seventh instead of August third. As you know, Ms. Zapata, she discussed the benefits of our proposed calendar and the overwhelming positive feedback that we received from our And the overwhelming positive feedback that we received from our stakeholder committees. Uh is 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 just remarkable and and this evening, I also want to inform the 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 trustees and and our community as well. Uh then, in order to make the start of the year easier. And more manageable for our teachers, uh our students, our parents. Uh we decided to to begin the school year with three weeks of full-time remote learning. Three weeks of full-time remote remote learning. So uh let me explain the what the remote learning for the first three weeks of school would look like. It's basically a a teacher will be providing instruction in his or her classroom via. An an online platform that will allow our students to learn from from their teachers. Uh while they're at home, just like Ms. Masias uh mentioned in her presentation regarding the different learning models. Uh I personally, along with district leaders, cabinet, uh I O's, we visited Myrtle Cooper Elementary to see what the setup. Would be like and you know, I'm very excited about our our new remote learning model. We we remain committed to to providing the the rigorous education education that all of our students that they need. Uh and that they deserve. Uh all of these decisions are 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 challenging to make. Uh as you already know, because there's just so many people. Uh when you're a district the size of Socorro S E, there's so many people who have the have unique circumstances. That we have to take into into consideration. But uh you know, however, after the 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 extensive collaboration with our stakeholders, as well as taking into consideration. The recommendation, as I said earlier, from the CDC, T E A, the local health government and the government officials. I'm confident that this is the right direction for for our school district. So after the first three weeks, and again, still following the CDC and T E A guidelines. Will move towards a staggered schedule and teaching model that will allow twenty-five percent of the students to go to school in their classrooms. And then, we'll be we'll progress to fifty percent and so forth. Uh until we have clearance to have one hundred percent of students back in school on a daily schedule. Uh now, for for everyone, you know, many people, including me, I still have questions for all of us who have many questions right now. I want to stress that once we have our proposed calendar approved. Uh and everybody understands how how we will begin our school year. Then, we move to the next phase, the next phase on how to specifically. Um transition our students from remote learning to to learning at school. And again, we will again have to collect extensive qualitative and and quantitative data. Uh from our parents, from our employees. So so we still have a lot, a lot of work to do. As 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 with all the COVID nineteen plans, uh it's important to note, you know, that details may be subject to change. As as we already know, we gotta be ready to to pivot on a dime, you know, pending the states of our our local community health. As we approach the first day of school. So just let me make this clear, we're committed. To supporting our students, our parents, our employees. Um throughout what will be another very, very challenging school year. Uh I want to reiterate that we are leading uh with our hearts and and our community's best interest in mind. And I know that by working together as a united, as a united team, uh we can get this school year done done right. So uh you know, thank you for for, you know, to all for exhibiting that uh team spirit, that love. That that unity and and for being patient, understanding, cooperative, you know, and above all. Uh somebody else said it earlier, above all, being flexible as we navigate um a new school year in a in a very, very unknown. Future. Our our principals are and district leaders, you know, will continue to be available to answer questions or concerns our employees, our parents may may have. Uh we'll also be sending letters home to to parents to keep them posted on on our new developments a- as we move forward. And I look forward to, cannot wait to look forward to being back together with our outstanding uh students and staff. One day, hopefully, uh in the in the in the near future. At this point, I guess we'll open it up if anybody has some questions, trustees.
Ms. Nahara, it's Gary Gander again.
Yes, sir, Mr. Ganda.
You know, Super, uh appreciate everything and the hard work that it took to to put this all together. I mean, it it's it's tough and you know, it's something that we, I guess, as a community never thought or as a country thought that we'd. Uh be going through right now. Um so I really do thank everybody and all the hard work and time that they put into this. I know it's difficult. Uh one question I have, Super, and I don't know if our that if our athletic directors here. What's gonna happen? Because again, it is Texas uh having to do with uh our sports. What's what's gonna happen there?
What's interesting before Miss He uh uh our athletic director, our awesome athletic director, Mr. Calderon answers. Mr. Gander, yesterday, we had a meeting with Millen. I was asked to speak to the Millenized the uh trustees and their community. And Mr. Gander, Millenize, he guess what one of their questions was? They wanted to know about athletics. So you are right, you know, we're in Texas. Uh so I just wanted to note that uh Mr. Calderon, Coach Calderon.
All right, good evening, uh President Naha and members of the board. Uh to answer your question, Mr. Gander, we um. Right now, U I L has tentative start dates. Uh we're gonna be waiting probably later this month or July for guidance on when seasons will start. And then, we'll start putting our plan together, what it what it would look like for us to uh come back on all four of our models. So we do have to wait for a a start date, but um we will work to to put a plan in place for a for a return.
And I'm asking for, because like I said, it's it's one, it's it's Texas and then and you know, sports is big in Texas, no matter what. Uh you know, I'm getting different, you know, you know, you run into people at Walmart or wherever you go, you know, you're gonna run in in especially into core. It's 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 a big but small community. But you know, that's one of the questions like, well, what's gonna happen with sports? Are we gonna do social distancing? Like, you know, let's say you uh, you know, football season kicks in and you know, it's it's Friday night lights. They're asking our, is it only gonna be parents allowed or are fans gonna be allowed, be allowed in? Are we gonna have social distancing? Are we gonna have, you you know what I mean? It's one of those like, why? I don't know. I don't know what to tell you. I I assume we're gonna have social distancing. I don't know if it's gonna be, I guess, we're gonna end up modeling. The high school sports with our graduations. I I'm assuming that's basically what we're gonna end up doing.
Oh, yes, sir. And and what we're doing is trying to just gather as much information as we can. We're borrowing, uh we're we're reaching out to statewide uh school districts. We're trying to get as much information from U I L as we can. Um you know, we're looking for guidance from the college ranks as far as how they're gonna open their seasons. Uh so there there are no definite answers right now. Um as as we get closer to those dates. Um I'm sure we'll have a little bit uh clearer understanding of, you know, what those requirements requirements are gonna be. But in the meantime, we're focused on um addressing concerns such as sanitation, um uh how we're gonna hydrate kids. Um you know, those types, those types of issues so that we are prepared. So that when um so then, we do get, you know, get the call and we're able to to start our seasons. Um that we are prepared uh with the materials and equipment that we need.
Okay, well, I'm I'm just and just to give uh something off the top of my head, I know we have. You know, like at the sack, I know we have the ability that we have our camera system. I don't know if we might, or it's on the table or even thinking about posting more, you know, the people that can't go to the game. Because we have to have only a certain number of people if we're gonna be able to put the games on the internet like we do our graduations.
Uh yes, sir. Um currently, U I L does not allow for live broadcasting for football. Um but there is.
But you could, and I'm also including volleyball. I'm including all that. I know we have the capability to do it. You know, for our home games when we do, I I know U I L doesn't allow it. But right now, with the circumstances, I don't know if that's one of the things that they might start allowing right now for some, you know, who can do it. Because I mean, it's, you know, a lot of people aren't gonna be able to go to these games. I'm assuming, I'm hoping by the time this clears up, something happens, miracle kicks in, we find a cure or something where. You know, we can get our, you know, we can go back to normal again. But I now, the reality is what it is. You know, when we start playing all these games, even like volleyball, it's gonna be tough because I mean, I've gone to volleyball games where it's packed. And I am assuming that half the people that were that were used to going aren't gonna be able to go anymore. And so, or even if, I don't know, you know, we're gonna, people have a camera system into where they can watch from the gym next door, you know? I don't know, I'm I'm just figuring out a way to, you know, because you you. A lot of people are gonna miss out. And and like I said, I I really feel sorry for the seniors this year. And that missed out on the end of their senior year, you know, soccer teams that didn't get to go to playoffs. The the track teams, the baseball teams, um the swim, you know, a lot of people that didn't get to finish out their senior year. And I wish we could give that back to them. But this is what we're living in right now and I I I wish them hopefully the best, you know, in their future. And hopefully, we can do something for our athletes this year. And everybody else, not even just student athletes, I mean, including, you know, the different programs that we have out there that, you know, go to go out of town to to compete. That didn't get to compete this year and. You like student council and another and other people that, you know, that that didn't get to travel and and go compete and do other things. So I'm just thinking of ways for. Maybe just put some ideas on the table to uh to make it easier, I guess.
Oh, yes, sir. And those are some, those are some, some great ideas. We have looked into broadcasting games and what that would take. Um we are researching that that right now. Um on June seventeenth, U I L will be having their legislative council meeting. And and I think we're gonna get some guidance on broadcasting games um at that time. Uh and like I said, we have been looking into some systems to do that. Um and 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 those are some great ideas for all of our sports.
Okay, well, I appreciate it. I'm sorry. I I, you know, I just wanted to get some clearance because I know there's, that's one of the big issues that we're gonna, that's gonna hit us first, you know, with. With athletics since, you know, it is like, again, it is Texas and athletics is big, you know, even including our middle schools and. You know, I, you know, I have a couple of nieces that play volleyball. You know, one's a senior this year and it's, you know, kind of tough to, you know, when she asked me, Uncle, what's gonna happen? I don't know. You know, I'm I'm, I know I'm up there in front, but I really don't know. And so, um you know, just if you can, keep everybody in the loop with whatever the way you guys uh put things out there, information out there. So please, if you can, let our parents put as much information out there for our parents to know what's going on.
Yes, sir. We plan it. As soon as we get information, we'll definitely share it with 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 our community.
Mr. Calderon, Paul Garcia, I do got a question. Obviously, you know, thank you for the amazing work that you all are doing. I can only imagine, you know, how overwhelmed um that it is that you all are right now. So I do appreciate that. Um my question is is regarding the tryouts. Yeah, I've been contacted by a lot of parents. Uh you know, they're trying out for for the, you know, they want, I don't know, I guess they wanted, their kids want to try out for the cheer team. Um you know, or or even for football, they want to earn those slots. Uh what kind of guidance do you have uh that I can share with them?
Um I can tell you that that early this summer, um well, early May, we started talking about what cheer year tryouts would look like. We've had, we've got a plan in place for that to take place um uh in July. Uh so we're looking at um for middle school and high school having having tryouts. Uh at that time, we've released some information already um through our cheer sponsors and our cheer coaches. Uh and and we're trying to get those uh those facilities secure so we can have tryouts. Uh as far as for football tryouts and 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 other sports, we're looking at, um of course, waiting for those seasons to open up. Um but we would have to find out when our start dates would be before before we could have tryouts.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Anybody else?
Uh President Nakarans, Paul Garcia, again, I got a a a question regarding, not for Mr. Calderon. But I think for Ms. Maribel Masias. Um Ms. Masias, what what kind of contingency plans do we have? Uh should the unfortunate case where either a teacher, an employee, custodian, uh student is comes back positive with COVID?
Uh yes, sir. Uh what we have in place and and we've we've put it in place since March is we have a contact tracing um protocol. So if there is anybody that does come back COVID positive, um if we, right now, it's that we've been very blessed. That all of our employees that have been essential employees have let us know, they've paid it forward and let us know. Um if in in any case, they might not share the information, what the local health department does is they would share it with us. At that time, what we do is we identify every single individual that was in contact with that employee. We pay it forward. Um if necessary, they're out for three to five days until they get tested, until they get a a response back. That is that first uh first degree of exposure. The employee that is or the 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 little one that would be COVID positive. Um what the local health department currently has is fourteen days of self-quarantine. And then, what they do is they come back and they'll get one to two negative tests. But the local health department at that point, they inform us and they actually give them a clearance to return to work. And in this place for students, it would be to return home. And what we've done is that um contact tracing protocol that we have in place, that was something that was shared with us with the local health department. And with OEM and we use their their um model and that's what we're implementing here in Team S I S D. So that's why it's so important that we minimize the groups as they transition back to school. And that we have that in place as far as we'll know what groups the student was with. Um you were mentioning if it happened during school, we went that turn, identify what grade level that student was in. Who that student came in contact with that day. And then, that's where the paying it forward of all the information would happen. Um and with the local health department, we would identify if we were able to self-quarantine a small group. Or if we would have to self-quarantine the entire campus.
Thank you so much. Also, I I've also been contacted regarding, there's a lot of parents that utilize the after-school daycare. Um I know we've had a a brief discussion about that earlier today. Do you touch on that?
Yes, sir. Uh we're actually gonna have a focus group with all of our daycares. It was actually planned for today. Many of them are requested next week on Tuesday, so we will be meeting with them. And truly, what we want to share with them is what we've shared with you. Uh we want to share with them our um our calendar, our learning platforms. And we want to create that community um collaboration where if students are at the daycare, that they know exactly. How they could log on to our network, uh what they're gonna need in order to for their students that they're taking care of at the daycares. To be able to log in, to be able to learn online. So those are the protocols that we're gonna be um talking to them about. We also discussed the possibility of teaching them um how to log into our to our computer system, what the students are gonna be doing. And um Dr. Graham has taken that lead and many of our daycare providers are very interested in learning to be able to provide that resource. For the children that they take care of. So um on Tuesday, we'll have that meeting. And I will definitely provide you all an update in a Friday packet of how many daycares attended and how many of them will be able to work with us. To ensure that um our parents have a location or or daycares available that will be able to work with us. To ensure that their children are able to log in and actually have their schooling while they're at daycare.
Thank you. I and you know, also in our conversation earlier, uh you know, you discussed uh. Some results of a research study uh that stated that a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, one week. Then a Tuesday, Thursday schedule is more beneficial for students regarding. Um I guess retention of the school material. Uh could you touch on that real quick if you don't mind?
Yes, you're exactly right. And I could share that one on a Friday packet. Sorry, I'm getting a lot of feedback. And actually, Ms. Parham was the one that shared that research with us. Um I'll give it to you on the Friday packet. And what it shows, it actually has um information that it shows that a Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Or an alternative alternating schedule or an A B, meaning an A M P M schedule, is much more beneficial for our students' retention. Versus a one week on, one week off. So I will definitely share that research with you all. That way, you could see the different learning models that other areas of of our nation. And other countries are doing. And and that way, you all could see that research. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, President Alhada.
Yes, sir, Mr. Morales.
Yeah, I would like to, I would like to take a moment to thank each and every one of of. Yeah, I would like to, I would like to take a moment to thank each and every one of the staff, the SIS, SISD team, beginning with the superintendent, cabinet members, campus leaders, support staff, technology personnel, and everyone else that's been a big part of bringing us back, getting us back into the swing of things. I realize the challenge that was placed upon y'all and I understand it was tough. And I know you've guys, I know you all have been working diligently, extremely hard to get this, get this going. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank you. I appreciate it a lot. And I'm sure the rest of the board feels the same way.
Are there any other questions?
President Nahara?
Yes, sir, Dr. Espinoza.
Yes, no, thank you very much to the trustees. Thank you, Mr. Morales, because, you know, the entire, the staff, the cabinet, you know, the directors, I could go on and on, principals, teachers. You know, it's, we've had some sleepless nights, you know, so I do thank you for recognizing the team, Mr. Morales. Appreciate that.
It's my pleasure. Ms. Nahara, I have another comment really quick.
Yes, sir, Mr. Morales.
In regards to the AB, that Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday format, I personally would strongly recommend it if we do have an opportunity to look at that, those models for the fact that back in ninety, I believe it was ninety-five, we piloted that program at Andrews High School and we found a lot of success with it. You know, basically, it's called an AB, AB schedule, AB type schedule. Anyhow, I just wanted to make a comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And yes, I would like to reiterate what Mr. Morales said. You know, going through this presentation tonight, it is scary. It is overwhelming. And I am just amazed at everything y'all have been able to work out for the safety of our students and our staff. And I know there are a million other questions and variables that still have to be answered. But we do have to wait for the CDC guidelines, the TEA guidelines, and the, and the local guidelines. This is absolutely amazing what you've accomplished so far. And I am just deeply grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's any, if there's not any other questions, we're going to go ahead and move on to item four A, which is consider approval of amended twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Socorro ISD student calendar. Ms. Zapata?
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board. Elisa Zapata, Assistant Superintendent of Schools for Elementary Education. Administration recommends consideration and approval of the amended Socorro ISD student calendar for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year as presented.
Motion to approve?
Second, Mr. Mina.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Gander and a second by Mr. Mina. And I'll now do a roll call. Mr. Morales?
Aye.
Mr. Geta?
Aye.
Mr. Gander?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mina?
Aye.
And Ms. Rodriguez? I don't think she was able to join us. And the motion carries. If there is no further business before this board, we are adjourned. And the time is six forty-four. Thank you all for joining us. We will answer everyone's questions as soon as we can. Thank you for your faith in us and thank you to our staff for their incredible work. And everyone, please be safe. Good night.